Good evening. I'm Erin Boucher, chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, September 10th, 2025. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to Liz Peplowski and Shrewsbury Media Connection for their assistance with our broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting. Tonight, we have a special opening. It's our tradition of the first meeting of the year. The chamber choir is here under the direction of Mr. Michael Lopamarda. He's directing the chamber choir and they will perform the Star Spangled Banner. Thank you very much. Mr. Lopamarda, would you like to introduce the students?
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you for having us in the front row. In this way, we have Amelia, we have Ermina, Anchel, Tandhi, Agnia, Michaela, Camille, Nishtha, and Siri. And in the back row, we have Nico, Callan, Norrian, Christian, Francesco, Adarsh, Rabab, Nathan, and Nelson.
I'd like to add my round of applause for our chamber choir. I'd like to add my thanks. They are also able to perform the National Anthem at our opening ceremonies for our first day for our staff. As has been the tradition, we always appreciate them coming and then sharing their talents with the whole community through this broadcast. I also want to let the community know that Mr. Lopamardo, who has been a longtime music educator and conductor in our school district, this year has been promoted to be our new director of performing arts. So how about a round of applause for Mr. Lopamardo? So he will now be leading our entire performing arts faculty throughout the district from our youngest students through our high school. So again, we really appreciate you coming out this evening and thank you for joining us. We wish you all the best this year. We're looking forward to the concerts that come up in the fall, winter, and spring. So thank you and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the recent loss of Kevin Dougherty, the parent of a Coolidge student under extremely tragic circumstances. Our hearts go out to the student and their family as they navigate this difficult time. We hope that they feel the strength of the community around them. At this time, I'd like to ask that we pause for a moment of silence to honor the life of Mr. Dougherty and to offer our quiet support of his family and friends grieving today. Before we begin tonight's agenda, I want to take a moment to recognize and express our deep gratitude to the staff and first responders who acted quickly, decisively, and with great care during the recent emergency situation at Coolidge Elementary School on August 28th. These situations are never easy for students, for families, or for those who are called upon to respond. But thanks to the calm, professional actions of school staff and the swift coordination with the Shrewsbury Police Department, Shrewsbury Fire Department, and other first responders, we were able to ensure the safety and well-being of all students and staff. To our teachers, administrators, and support staff, thank you for your calm care and professionalism, for following safety protocols under pressure, and for offering comfort and reassurance to our students during a very difficult and complex situation. We are incredibly proud of how the Shrewsbury Public Schools team responded during this extremely stressful incident and the communication that was provided to families as the events of the day unfolded. To our police officers, firefighters, EMTs, state police, and other emergency personnel, your partnership and presence make all the difference. We are grateful for your service and your unwavering commitment to protecting our schools and community. And finally, to our students and families, thank you for your cooperation, patience, and resilience as we work through the situation. We know that emergencies such as this one can leave a lasting emotional impact, and we remain committed to providing support in any way we can. The safety of our students and staff is always the district's first priority. As we face challenges like the one we experienced on August 28th, we face them together as a community united in care for one another. Our Shrewsbury community has also been grieving the loss of two longtime secretaries. Judith Adair served our district for over 20 years, most of them as secretary at Spring Street School. Judith was known for her infectious laugh and positive spirit as she ran the Spring Street office flawlessly with an unwavering commitment to meeting the needs of students, families, and staff. Her kindness and care for the families and students she encountered contributed to creating a wonderful school environment. Karen Freeman served as the secretary for almost 30 years at both the old and new Beale School, where she was always ready to answer a question, lend a hand, share advice, or offering a caring smile or hug. Karen kept the school running smoothly and was at the heart of the Beale community. We offer our condolences to Judith and Karen's families and to the Spring Street and Beale communities. And at this time, I ask that you join me in a moment of silence in their honor. The first item on the agenda for tonight is public participation. Tonight, we have not received any requests to speak at public participation. Public participation is available to all residents who would like to address the committee regarding concerns of policy, budget, and the performance of the superintendent. In the future, if anyone wishes to speak at public participation, they should contact the chairperson in advance of the next scheduled school committee meeting. The next item on our agenda is chairpersons' and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report this evening? Ms. Free.
I'd just let the committee and as well as anyone watching at home know that the High School Building Committee had our first initial meeting last night. At this point, we've just organized as a committee, and we discussed the milestones that we've achieved so far with the MSBA eligibility process in period, and we've also talked about the review for the enrollment projection. As you know, when the MSBA looks at a project, one of the main things they look at is enrollment and what the building needs may be into the future. So that is another report that we looked at. And we are preparing for the October 22nd, 2025 Special Town Meeting where a warrant article will be put before town meeting members regarding funding for a feasibility study, which is the next module phase for the process. So we're well on our way, but it's exciting and we're looking forward to this being a successful project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Felica Fudry?
Thanks. I would like to bring an incredible effort by Coolidge students after the tragic senseless tragedy in the town. A group of students who were, some of them are classmates of the student and also friends and family, came together and organized a lemonade and chai stand over the Labor Day weekend, and then they raised around $2,300 plus during, initially they expected to be a two-hour event, which extended to six hours because of the community participation and enthusiasm. So the parents would like to thank the entire community for their support and their kids would like to, I think kids already donated that amount to the college principal. So it's incredible, it's to see that, what they're learning at school, they're implementing in their day-to-day activities by showing care and compassion and kindness. So I'm incredibly proud of these kids.
Thank you. Dr. Sawyer, anything for superintendent's report this evening?
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. First, thank you for your very eloquent remarks. I also want to echo first the condolences to the families of Judith Adair and Karen Freeman, two longtime exceptional employees of the school department, did a wonderful job as secretaries. Anyone who knows anything about schools knows that the secretary is the hub of everything revolves around and essentially runs the day-to-day work. They're invaluable and they did extraordinary work in those roles. They were just also extraordinary people, and we certainly miss them very much, and our condolences to their families and to the Spring Street and Beale communities. I also want to echo your remarks in terms of how proud I am of the response to the emergency that occurred in the Coolidge neighborhood on the second day of school. It was the first day of school for our kindergarteners at Coolidge. Tiffany Austria, the principal, the entire team there, certainly our partners in public safety with the Police and Fire Department, the Town Manager's Office, the Central Office Team, everyone, AA Transportation, our transportation partner, everyone pitched in, followed protocols. You know, we have spoken at different presentations over the years about the work that we do around safety and security. Much of that we can't share publicly because obviously there's confidential processes and protocols that we have, but we have mentioned that we've done multiple drills over the course, whether those are lockdown drills in the school, whether they're tabletop drills with leadership and public safety around how we would handle different situations. And you can never prepare well enough, but I think people responded to the training extremely well, the way that they should, and they made really thoughtful decisions in the moment around how to best keep our students and our staff safe, to communicate well with the community, especially the parent community at Coolidge. We should mention that several of those students, we made a decision in the moment to send students who had not yet exited their buses to the Beale School campus to make sure that they were as safe as possible. And the folks at Beale School did a wonderful job accepting them, along with the Coolidge staff who went with them on the buses. The Coolidge parent community was extraordinary in terms of following what we asked them to do in terms of reuniting with their students once the incident was over. And then there's been excellent follow-up. I wanted to commend our clinical staff, Jamie Millitt in particular, our Director of Mental Health and Counseling, for connecting our staff and parents in the Coolidge community with care after the fact. They reached out to Riverside Trauma Center, had someone out at Coolidge School yesterday, both for staff after school and for parents in the evening, which I understand went very well. So, you know, throughout, that's been excellent. Most importantly, the Coolidge community has done an outstanding job making sure to respond to the needs of Mr. Dougherty's family, particularly his son, who returned to school the following week, to make sure that he had the supports that he needs, and that's something that will continue for as long as he's our student and as long as his family is part of our Shrewsbury School community. I know that there are many different ways that are being planned to support the family, and we will work closely with the family to make sure that we do that in a way that's appropriate and that helps them. And once again, I could not be more proud with the way that our school community responded in the moment to a crisis and continues to respond to be supportive going forward from there. And I will always be incredibly grateful for how people reacted in that moment. Beyond these very sad pieces that went along with our opening of school, I am pleased to report that otherwise, we've had a very good opening to the school year, preschool through high school. I am grateful for the very hard work that all of our staff have done, our public building staff, that families to get students ready. You know, it was a very smooth opening of school overall, and we're looking forward to a successful school year. And our hope is that we're able to, as will be later in this meeting, celebrating a lot of successes that occurred over the last school year. We will once again set, you know, goals for trying to do the best we can by our students in terms of their academic achievement and their social and emotional learning and support, and to make sure that our schools are serving our children of our community as well as they can. So that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next time-scheduled appointment is a vote on acceptance of two gifts. Per School Committee Policy 911, gifts of 5,000 or more must be formally accepted by the school committee. There are two gifts being presented to us tonight. The first is a $25,000 donation to Shrewsbury High School from the Elaine Lally Freel Revocable Trust, 1999. Ms. Lally grew up in Shrewsbury and attended Shrewsbury High School from 1960 to 1964, where she excelled as a member of the debate team. In 1999, Ms. Freel created the Elaine Lally Freel Revocable Trust, 1999, which upon her death would bequeath $25,000 to Shrewsbury High School to be used by the governing body of said school to support student participation in intramural competitive forensic events. Intramural competitive forensics is commonly known as speech and debate. We've received a memo regarding this very generous donation. Does anyone have any questions or comments before we vote to accept the gift?
Yeah, just to add quickly, we were deeply appreciative that the executor of her estate reached out to us with this wonderful news. We've been in touch, Mr. Girardi and I, with Mr. Vizdlo at the high school and with the speech and debate program, and very excited about this opportunity. It's an incredibly generous gift, and we're certainly deeply appreciative to Ms. Freel and want to be sure that, we'll be sure that those connected to her estate will be notified of the vote this evening and how we plan on using the funds. So we're deeply appreciative.
So I'd like to have a motion that the school committee vote to accept the $25,000 donation from the Elaine Lally Freel Trust to be used by Shrewsbury High School to support student participation in intramural competitive forensic events, or commonly known as speech and debate. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A second. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. The next donation is on June 25th, we voted to accept an anonymous gift of $10,000 to the Colonial Fund to support innovation and enable the district to finalize the purchase of an animatage table for the use in biology, biomedical, and anatomy classes. The gift that was received was for actually $12,000, so the committee will be asked to vote to accept the new donation amount. Anyone have any comments or questions before we vote? Dr. Sawyer, anything?
We were certainly extremely grateful in the fact that it sounds like we got a 20% tip on top of the anonymous donation, which we greatly appreciate. But, and we're putting that animatage table into use this year where it's going to be a great addition to our biology and biological science classes, and we're very pleased and grateful to these anonymous donors.
So may I please have a motion that the school committee vote to accept an updated anonymous gift of $12,000 to the Colonial Fund?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next time-scheduled appointment is a consultant report with regard to our food services program. Shrewsbury Public Schools worked with Brigade, a food service consultant, to evaluate operations and identify opportunities to expand scratch cooking and offer more culturally responsive meals. An onsite assessment of the food service program was conducted by Brigade LLC in April of 2025. A representative from Brigade will be in attendance this evening to present their findings and recommendations, and we received the report of the consultant as well. Mr. Girardi, would you like to introduce who you have with you?
Thank you. I'll begin by introducing Beth Nichols, who is our Director of Food Services here in Shrewsbury Public Schools. And Beth and I, this past year, connected with Mr. Ryan Kennedy, who is the Director of Chef Operations for Brigade, and they've worked with us over the past six months or so to conduct an assessment of the food services, as you just mentioned. So lots of information that was shared with us. We got a pretty thorough assessment, and our goal is to take this assessment and to use the information. It really gives us kind of a framework to work in as we move forward with the growth of our food services program. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan. I'll manage through the slideshow here and let him share his information.
Awesome. Hey, everybody? Yeah, we'll get into it. So we've conducted an assessment back in 2020, or back in April. Basically, we send an assessor here, we go through all of the schools, take a kind of look at the physical spaces and evaluate all of that. We're observing the current operations. We're asking Beth for a tremendous amount of information, sharing of documents, recipes, menus, labor models, all of that sort of stuff. And then from there, we're kind of, you know, looking for opportunities to kind of increase scratch cooking and kind of structure the report to go through ultimately what their goals are and what our findings are, and then, you know, basically a gap analysis and provide recommendations based on that. So, you know, just as an introduction, the participation and revenue have grown substantially since universal free meals have been in place. The leadership team has been eager to expand scratch cooking, develop more culturally relevant menu items, and continue to build the food service program. You know, we identified that the program's structure currently lacks dedicated culinary leadership, so it's kind of self-evident, but like, if you want to do more scratch cooking, then obviously you need kind of culinary expertise, especially at this scale. So trying to align, you know, current labor and operational systems to be successful, you know, we identified that as like kind of a major gap. We thought the kitchen teams operated with a really high degree of autonomy. A lot of people took a lot of pride in their work. They demonstrated some creativity, especially in how they prepare and present food. We thought the salad bars specifically were like really, really nice, as with a lot of the cold-prepared food. The staff were motivated, they were committed to quality. The kitchens were largely equipped to support increased scratch cooking, like the infrastructure, the bones are here already. Some of those key challenges to be addressed, as I mentioned, culinary leadership. You know, with any changes in the amount of food being actually prepared in-house, staffing model will need to be adjusted to reflect that. So right now, with a lot of, you know, processed foods, you're paying for someone else to do that processing. If you bring that in-house to do the processing yourself, obviously that labor model's going to have to flip a little bit. And, you know, there's recruitment and retention constraints. Leadership positions right now span the duration of the school year, not the calendar year. And so, you know, we think also that like adding additional contracted days to create kind of full-year roles or something there, you know, close to that would be helpful, especially if you're talking about planning like a major kind of paradigm shift. And then, you know, just all of this points to deliberate changes that strengthen leadership capacity, aligning staffing models with production goals, and just trying to bring greater consistency to the daily operations, so kind of take that interest that all of the staff have and the pride that they take, and kind of get everybody marching in the same direction, everybody kind of on the same page, and, you know, just working to a high standard by providing them with a lot of training. So the first recommendation is expanding that leadership team and realigning the labor model. So additional culinary expertise should be added to the leadership team. Ideally, you'd bring on something like a dedicated chef position. This role would support the district's scratch cooking goals, you know, primarily through recipe development, daily production support, so that means like being in the kitchen and just kind of like working shoulder to shoulder with people to kind of show them the way and model it, be able to provide them with feedback, and then a lot of targeted culinary training for all of the staff to kind of not just train the folks on like what their daily responsibilities are, but you're trying to create this like perpetual pipeline of like next person up because they have already been familiarized with some of the skills that they may not need to use every day, but they're ready. So that means when a cook steps down, or a lead or manager steps down, that like the next person is there and you're not having to constantly fill higher-level positions from the outside. A chef would complement the existing strengths of the director and the administrative assistant. You're really trying to, our suggestion is that ultimately you're adding a thought partner with a skill set that's currently lacking now. So this is a person who could strategize, but also give you the ability to kind of implement what the dreams and goals are. The chef position, I believe, would likely need to be hired externally, you know, through what we saw in conversations. We're not aware of anyone currently on the staff with the skills and training necessary to lead that work. And from our conversations as well, I think it makes sense for the district to kind of conduct an analysis of just like what are comparable positions in the general area going for, and then use that to kind of come up with like a job description, scope of like what the position would entail, and then, you know, from there, like reasonable salaries, things like that. So to ensure that the momentum of, you know, a chef hire could be carried year-round, you know, we recommend that like just basically expanding the number of days that the director and the administrative assistant roles work currently. That's primarily for like a lot of planning. I'm sure, you know, as you all know, but certainly Beth could attest to, like, once things start happening and you're running the day-to-day operation, there's not a lot of time left over to do a lot of planning. So it's like the year starts and then you hit, you know, the new year, and you catch your breath for a second, and then basically after that, like the year's winding down. It just happens quickly. They're constantly short-staffed. That is a reality across all food service operations nationwide. I've never been to a food service operation where they're like, oh yeah, we just have, you know, we're really doing well staffing-wise. So you're constantly playing catch-up. So as a result, it's really hard to do big-scale planning mid-year. You kind of need that time during the summer, but not everybody's working during the summer. And so having some of those weeks for that planning to really take place and really take what you learned over the course of the year and then figure out a plan to kind of like adjust and assess, we think makes a lot of sense. It's also just generally an industry standard for like any scratch cooking department, you know, that is doing this volume and number of meals, you know, the food service directors generally in those operations are closer to a year-round position. And, you know, based on industry benchmarks, this is regarding staffing, we kind of recommend that the district is hiring one full-time cook for every 300 hot scratch made meals served. I kind of have this thing that will probably go on my tombstone when I die, and it just basically says that like scratch cooking programs are built through cooks. That is a thing that happens. If you walk into the kitchens now, not just in this district, but most, you would basically find that like once lunch starts, there's nobody in the kitchen. Everybody is serving, doing other things that are directly involved with like what it takes to administer the program. Could be paperwork, could be putting away orders, could be running a cash register, could be setting up and serving, breaking down lunch, but like there's nobody with time to cook. And even if there are, even if there are cooks, there's not really enough time to do like real scratch cooking. And from my understanding with conversations with Chris and Beth, the goal is like some version of what we would say is like generally real kind of higher-level scratch cooking. And so that is kind of a metric that we use in a number of districts that we work in that have onsite kitchens, they don't have a central kitchen model or anything like that, and they're doing, you know, full-scale scratch cooking. That means handling raw proteins most days, that means doing like quick breads, you know, from scratch, making your own soups, sauces, stocks, dressings, things like that. You know, there's some things that you would also still farm out, like you're not going to make tortillas from scratch, or, you know, papoosas, or your own sliced bread for sandwiches. But, you know, a lot of that other stuff that, you know, a general restaurant would take on in most cases, those are things that can be brought in-house if you do it deliberately and thoughtfully, and this is kind of, you know, a high-level benchmark about how to look at doing that. So this, you know, in practice would look like hiring probably at least two cooks at Shrewsbury High School, one extra cook each at both the middle schools, and then eventually probably like a cook at the elementary schools. Those cooks might not need to be full eight-hour employees. But the reason why you do this is because these folks have, their time is there to produce food. They don't have to think about putting away orders or placing orders or doing inventory or paperwork. And as a result of that, you know, they get very good at managing their time if they're adequately trained and supported, and you put the right things in place. And as a result, you can kind of continue to raise that ceiling on what's possible from a scratch cooking perspective. And where I live in New London, Connecticut, and where the company started, we've been scratch cooking since 2016, and like we train the cooks big time, and like they know how to manage their time, and we're not getting folks to manage their time, and we're not getting folks with longtime, you know, restaurant pedigrees. We're just generally promoting conscientious folks who really want to learn, and we train them a lot, and that's always a really great feeling. But this is still like a benchmark that we generally use. The next recommendation is to implement training to kind of support new culinary skills for the entire team. So, you know, training is one of those things that, again, not super commonplace in public school kitchens. It is there generally, it's a requirement by the USDA that a certain amount of training goes on. But what I'm talking about is ongoing, consistent training grounded in real kitchen scenarios that, that also pay attention to the way that adults learn. And we recommend combining formal training sessions with, you know, just some more informal shoulder-to-shoulder coaching, which is like, I'm going to go into a school and like, we're going to cook lunch together, let's talk about how many portions we're making, let's talk about when we're going to start this, you know, take a look at this, you know, chicken thigh that's in here, what do you think? You know, what does it sound like, smell like, that sort of thing? And then initial training modules should really focus on like those foundational skills, not taking for granted that everybody, or that anybody specifically is bringing anything to the table and kind of starting from the ground up, you know, weighing and measuring food, knife techniques, setting up a workstation, you know, and then progressing to more advanced topics like batch cooking, recipe execution, scaling, creating prep lists, forecasting, and then, you know, handling raw proteins. And again, just trying to build like this like comfort and core competencies that folks need to be able to operate in this type of the space with the goals that were outlined to us. And then ideally, training is embedded into the rhythm of a regular workday, so this is not talking about having after-school stuff or, you know, asking that there's any kind of new bargaining to add, like training days. This is like a chef going into the schools and working with the staff within, you know, a real-world environment to provide them with this type of training. This is the type of thing that, you know, we've seen done many, many times, and if training like this had to exist in another way, we probably wouldn't exist as a company because you have to, you know, make it happen within the regular school day. So it's certainly possible. And this allows the chef to kind of revisit topics over time. I think a big thing is that, you know, you need reps, you know, everybody needs reps to create that familiarity. You can't expect that you're going to train somebody on weighing and measuring food, and then it's just done, you move on to the next thing. You have to train them and then reinforce that kind of all of the time and create a space where if people feel comfortable to kind of ask questions and make mistakes and not be kind of afraid of that either. The next recommendation is to do this in a phased way. So, you know, basically taking those two prior recommendations and really kind of like creating more of a phased approach and starting at the secondary schools, because I think they're already better equipped, both from a staffing perspective, but also in terms of just like equipment and all of that, that they're, they're really ready to go. And also, there's just less of those sites, so, you know, you can kind of, you can be there more frequently. So kitchens at these sites already have cooks on the team, and so you, you know, want to add additional cooks, but they're better positioned to kind of pilot more robust scratch cooking at this time. I think especially starting at the high school, like they already kind of have everything that they need. You would need to add cooks, but like you could spend a lot of time there piloting something and just really like learning, and then applying that learning to how you plan to move into the next schools. You know, sometimes you can try to do it all at once, but the challenges that the elementary schools will face relative to the secondary schools, you know, they're a bit different. Also trying to get this many cooks in place at one time when it's difficult enough to just like regularly staff a kitchen, it could be, you know, create a lot of setbacks. So this gives, again, time to refine recipes, assess true labor demands, strengthen some of the protocols that you're going to start with, and then, you know, make sure that you're in a good position before you move on. And, you know, we would anticipate that like, you know, things going pretty well, it would take about two years to build up at least like the foundation of what this, you know, where you can kind of begin to be like, okay, this is like where we want to be, and now we really need to kind of figure out how to, you know, perpetually maintain it. And I would say that's ambitious. There's probably a lot of things like staffing, that bringing in additional people from the outside that are basically, those timelines are out of your control, but assuming that that went relatively straightforward, you know, two years is probably a good timeframe. So, oops. Define a clear food and menu philosophy. So this is just another recommendation that, that we're making, especially when we talk to school districts that are really like dead-set on scratch. You know, just having a clear food philosophy is just important. It helps to drive decision-making and create a coherent message that you can share with like the community at large. You could develop your own food philosophy that kind of articulates a commitment to quality and can help leadership kind of formally define program values. It sort of says to everybody what you want to be about and like ultimately how you make decisions on what finds its way onto the menu. And, you know, a lot of times, it might not necessarily be just scratch. For example, like, you know, the idea behind quality is kind of like I said, like you don't have to, just because something's from scratch doesn't make it great. You want the kids to enjoy it, you want to feel good serving it, you want to feel good purchasing it. You know, there's a lot of ways, some folks focus on ingredients or sourcing as locally as they can, all of that sort of stuff. But, you know, it's a good thing to kind of have a North Star when it comes to what you put on the menu, because there's just a lot of competing interests when you're running a food service program. And so if you have that North Star, it's helpful to kind of keep going and articulate that to the public. And then other things that we suggest, this is like more low-hanging fruit, which would be just offering a daily rotating item paired with a few cold items that remain the same every day. So that's basically just as a way to kind of create more scratch cooking while being as efficient as possible. And then also, the district can identify purchased products available within the collective purchasing cooperative that they're in that can elevate quality and perception of the program, particularly if it's not feasible to prepare that item in-house. So kind of what I had said before, like papoosas, for example, like you would never make those in a school, but you might have a population that, that really resonates with, and you want to be able to bring them in. So, you know, utilizing that good balance of like what you can purchase of high-quality ingredients relative to what you decide to prepare in-house. Make targeted investments in equipment and facilities. Most sites are already really well-equipped. Some specific sites need updates to their facilities and equipment to successfully support scratch cooking in the future. Walter J. Patton, is that how you say that?
Yes.
I always see him written, but never hear him. That would probably benefit from a 12-gallon steam kettle or an induction burner just to introduce surface cooking, so just, they have no way to boil water now, basically. So that takes a lot of menu items potentially off the table, especially if the other schools in the district have that capacity. At the high school, I think increasing the number of combi ovens or just changing the single combi ovens to like a taller wheel-in model would expand capacity there. That just allows for things to be more efficient and, you know, be more flexible with production, but they're extremely expensive, so I'm not saying like do it tomorrow. It's just kind of like when it makes sense, you kind of make that conversion slowly, or if one of them breaks, which is, happens all of the time, then, you know, swapping that out for something that has a little bit more capacity makes sense. And then I think smallwares, those are something that just always need to be addressed, so that's like containers, you know, tools, scales, immersion blenders, salad spinners, you know, some schools have more than others, but once scratch cooking really gets going, I always find that we never have enough containers for anything, and we're always searching for, for those types of things. So just generally, there's an expectation that once that gets going, you probably will require some investment on that end. So next steps. So we think Shrewsbury Public Schools is well-positioned to build a food service program with a greater emphasis on scratch. We kind of recommend the following next steps. Determine the feasibility of hiring a chef and kind of begin that recruitment or planning. Extend the director and the administrative assistant positions to closer to full-year roles. Prioritize creating and filling additional cook positions, specifically at the high school and the secondary school and the middle schools, and then eventually at elementary schools. Pilot expanding scratch at the secondary schools first, and then clarify a guiding food philosophy that's just easy to communicate district-wide so that people feel like they are understanding of where the program is headed. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Any comments?
Before, before you're going to do questions, if you don't mind, I know Mr. Girardi might want to add to this, but certainly appreciate Mr. Kennedy's report and the work that Brigade did to do the assessment. I think one thing to just be clear for those watching is that, you know, we've experienced, there's two things. Our strategic plan, our five-year strategic plan talked about enhancing our meal service and the quality of food, making the, the menu more diverse where appropriate, and certainly we become a more diverse school district, lots of people from different culinary traditions we have for, for students in the school. Simultaneously, over the last couple of years, with the rollout of our strategic plan, we have this change to universal no-cost meals that are subsidized not only by the federal government, by the state government, so that all of our students are able to get a meal, breakfast or lunch at their school at no cost to them, directly in terms of paying for lunch or breakfast. And I'm going to ask Ms. Nichols to help me with this. I think prior to the pandemic and prior to this universal approach, roughly we're at like 50% participation in terms of getting lunches from, from the school cafeteria, and now we're at about, what?
Eighty-five to ninety.
Yeah, so it's a-
Some days almost 100% at the high school.
Yeah, so it's a substantial change. And so one of the pressures that we have is that getting the number of students who are getting meals through, and that, that affects how we can prepare food. I think the most obvious example is, you know, prior to this, at the high school, there was a sandwich bar and a taco bar where it was sort of like Subway, Jersey Mike, Search of Potlay, you kind of order what you wanted. Now all that has to be pre-made. Still really good quality stuff, but they have to pre-make what they think kids are going to take, because there's not time to actually do it to order. So this is one of the things that I know we're grappling with. The benefit of the universal meals piece is that it's really strengthened our budget. And as we take these recommendations from the consultant and look at making a plan that would come back to you, obviously looking at what we might expect for revenue and expenses. We have a new, as you know, three-year contract that you negotiated with the Cafeteria Workers' Association, which has put us in a really strong position to be able to be very predictable for our costs for the next three years in terms of labor, in terms of rates and pay rate, as we think about potentially adding cooks, for example, or whatever that might mean. And we, and we enhanced the pay for cooks because we knew we were not in market for that, and so we're in a stronger place where that goes. Making investments in capital equipment is something that prior to this model was a real challenge for us in terms of financially. We have more resources now. So this first step in sort of getting a sense of like, if we want to move in this direction, what does that sort of vision maybe look like? And then the next phase will be to look, take, you know, take this information, your questions from tonight, and come back with some initial plans around what that might look like, what it might cost, how it might be phased in, from the revenue that we get from the program. Because I don't want anyone watching to think that we're saying, oh, we're going to take some funding from our educational program and move it into food services to support some of these ideas. You know, we'd be looking to do that as a self-contained cost center, as it always essentially has been. So that's just some context, and it's important as we get into the Q and A portion of the, of the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think the charge as well is that we charged Mr. Kennedy and his team with kind of a full soup-to-nuts, to stay on the kind of food theme here, but what a full scratch cooking program would look like to understand kind of the scope of the work that would happen. It's very eye-opening, very eye-opening with the amount of positions and the materials and infrastructure that you'd need to invest to bring that on. But I think it really helps us kind of set some expectations for ourselves around how we begin start, to start moving the needle on this, and that's where I think the, you know, the detail of this report's going to be really helpful for us.
Thank you for the report. It is really eye-opening to see how food, school food has changed over the years. I mean, we're getting a lot better, and I think, you know, talking about scratch cooking and things, it's just something that we've never really talked about. So for, for me, looking at it, definitely want to look at this, like what, what can we model that fits what Shrewsbury needs are? And Chris, for you, my, my question around the universal food, are you hearing anything about, you know, is this going to go on forever? Could there, could there be a problem where that does go away, and then we have additional expenses of staff or something like that? That would be my only concern with a deep dive into something.
Sure. I'll speak to that, and Ryan may have like a, you know, he works across the nation. He may have some more input from places outside of Massachusetts. You know, Massa- Massachusetts right now is, is pretty stable, you know, it's a federally-funded program. However, it's subsidized by Massa-, you know, by Massachusetts. So it's something that I think the, it's resonating to our local, state, federal governments that it's a really popular program with families, regardless of socioeconomic status, other things. So right now, sitting in the seat, I'd say it'd be really tricky to, to pull that out from, from people now that it's become kind of the norm.
Right.
But having said that, every year, they're playing with money to make sure that it's getting fully funded, so it doesn't look like it's just set in stone every year and it's not being looked at, and they're looking at other places to make cuts. So I'm not sure I can give you the best answer, but I think that's-
Right. It's an unknown, so we sit here today, but I think, you know, I, I agree. I think for them to pull something like this, that's been so successful for students, would be difficult, but I think it's something that we have to think about as we look at the modeling and any financial costs. So thank you.
Yeah, I would say, just to add a little bit, a lot of states pass legislation like this. A lot more states have either have, have it up and, you know, different types of measures to kind of move it forward. I would say Massachusetts is probably one of the more stable versions relative to some other states in the ways in which that they plan to kind of pay for it. And again, I think, yeah, it's, it is a difficult thing. I've only seen it kind of rolled back or threatened to be rolled back in two of the states, but I think it was very much tied to the way in which they decided to kind of fund it and tie it into the way that they worked through the budget process, that it was kind of flimsy to begin with. And that's just because, because of some of the unique ways in which the tax structure works in a state like Colorado, for example. Other states, you know, like California, which is where they were kind of the first of its kind, like it's extremely stable there, and, you know, there's been more and more studies and work going out, or work being done to kind of prove the value of investments like this, that has kind of like a reverberation through the local economy and the state economy, and that those are really good things, especially if it's tied to like, you know, increasing staff within the kitchens rather than sending that money out to, you know, major food manufacturers in other states, or if it's there to support local procurement and things like that, then again, you're kind of strengthening those economies within the state. And the more time passes, I think, similar to some other food programs, investments, people are finding that it actually has these, you know, kind of amplifying effects.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for the report. It's a lot to, to think about with this, and I think Dr. Sawyer brought up a great point about food services being self-contained, right? It doesn't touch our budget. It's based on the revenue that's generated by food services. And we did make some really good progress, I felt, during the negotiations to get more of the roles like cooks and managers in-market, and I really think that should help in terms of attract and retain talent. I, I think as we kind of pick through the feasibility of this, I'd love to see if there's other districts in the state that have gone from where we are today to scratch kitchen, just to kind of understand like how they implement it, and then how would it work, obviously within the framework of our, our food service finances. Lots, lots to think about, but definitely some, some benefits as well, and, and we've seen that uptick in activity, as Ms. Nichols mentioned, 85% versus where we were prior to these universal no-cost meals. But, but yeah, thank you for the recommendations. Appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
What I had to say was actually very similar. Is scratch cooking, this is great, and this is really exciting, and I, I'm looking, I do have a lot of questions, but a lot of it is as we go and we think about this deeper, what that looks like, but is scratch cooking something that you're seeing Massachusetts, New England, is that districts are moving more towards that?
Yeah, nationwide.
Okay.
But, I'm sorry, I'll leave.
No, no, you go ahead.
Okay. I live in Connecticut, I'm from Connecticut. I would say generally like food service operations that we've been through in Massachusetts and certain parts of New York, and then Connecticut are not, you know, you don't know that you're in Massachusetts when you step from a Massachusetts kitchen into a Connecticut one, and you wouldn't recognize that you're in a very different economy. You know, it's ultimately like a regional sort of economy that, that is happening, and we're all operating basically under the same rules, both for purchasing and, you know, administering the program. And yes, for sure, like I, I do work with the State Department of Education in New York, and we've been administering training. They are a universal meals state, which is new to the state, and we basically go around and just do training school by school. Like I only go to one school in a school district and do training one time to try to help them figure out scratch cooking and things like that, but everybody's moving, I don't want to say everybody, but, you know, lots of places are moving. When we started working in Connecticut in 2016, I didn't know of any districts really that were like trying to do it day in, day out. And now I, we visit districts everywhere, but specifically throughout the state of, of New York kind of nearby, and then where we, where I live in Connecticut, that are kind of making that push and making it work financially. I'm not saying that it's easy, and I'm not saying that you don't have to make difficult[1765.50] it's easy, and I'm not saying that you don't have to make difficult decisions, or that you get everything on your wish list or anything like that. I worked with the Food Service Director in New London, Connecticut, five-school school district, about three thousand five hundred students, you know, like similar overall, kind of like scale, you know, in the same kind of ballpark at least as Shrewsbury. And, you know, every year, we prepared a budget for the Board of Education about like what our staffing model was going to be, and what we expected our food costs to be, and what we thought our participation would be. And, you know, our non-negotiable was like, scratch cooking, that was what we were going to do. And then we kind of backed in the rest to see like, well, what level can we do? And what can we afford? And what is reasonable? All with the expectation that like we would not be asking the general fund for any money, and that we were going to kind of keep this self-contained. And it was hard, you know? It really was hard. And, and the decisions that we made over time, we're like figuring out, how do we maximize our USDA entitlement to make sure that like we're getting the most bang for our buck from the free money and food that the government is giving us that is not coming out of our like cash, actual supply of our bu-, our food budget. And then from there, it was like, yeah, just being as practical and efficient as we possibly could and figure out like, how do we, how are we clever with how we menu things? How are we clever with how we staff things? How do we build up efficiency and competency within the kitchen so that they can take on more while, you know, we're not adding labor hours because they're just extremely proficient? How do we create an environment where people want to stay so we're not constantly sinking money into retraining people and starting over? And yeah, it was very, very hard. But, you know, we are, we're still there, 2016 to 2025. We're running a stable program financially. We don't have any fairy godparents that are coming in and dropping off a half a million dollars every year to kind of float it. And we're not taking money from the general fund. But, you know, it is difficult. And, you know, you do need to go over things with like a fine-tooth comb and then check again. And sometimes, you know, you guess wrong and participation thinks, or something catastrophic kind of happens that throws you for a little bit. And then you just reassess. And, and that's kind of why the recommendation is to like add some time for the director and the administrative assistant to kind of like have planning time to really like be intentional about what the plan is. Because all of you, I'm sure, will be involved to some degree, but like you're not, it's not your life, you know? You're going to look at it for a short amount of time, get a sense of it, and be like, yep, this sounds good, or, you know, scrutinize it in another way. But, you know, somebody in best position, like they, you take it home with you every day. And, you know, you have two mandates, you know, one being increase, improving the food, and the other being like financially sustainable. And, you know, that is, those are hard things to balance and kind of, you know, in conflict sometimes as well.
Thank you. Also, so yeah, thank you. And it's a wonderful deep dive into the existing infrastructure. So my, I have a couple of questions, very quick ones. So with, with all this analysis with that, every school, this school system, which ones are the, like, I'm looking for a quick win. If we are looking for a quick win, is there one particular school that we can jumpstart and do a testing, like beta testing of the, the scratch cooking?
Yeah, I think
Or high school?
Yeah.
It's a high school?
Yeah. I mean, I, I wouldn't say necessarily like a quick win, but there's less kind of ramp up that needs to happen there in terms of like equipment and the already existing labor that's in place. So things could happen there, especially if you like added a chef and they were going to focus all of their time there. You know, there's not, you know, the bones are there. And there's not a lot. So I think there, it's a high-volume place. So, you know, I would probably be very deliberate, which is a word I use a lot, about, you know, how much I was trying to do. So I wouldn't say like everything is going to be scratch cooking on day one, or we're only going to do it like this. It's like maybe we would have a number of menu items, and we're going to do one scratch item a few times a week. And we're going to feature it, but we're not going to make it for thirteen hundred or, you know, whatever the number is, we're going to make four hundred portions or something like that. And it's manageable, but it's available. Students will still want other convenience items and pre-made sandwiches and stuff like that. And, and that's okay. But that's probably, that's where I would start if it were me. And I would say, you know, in general, I understand that whenever there comes a large investment and a lot of focus, then people expect results, and they expect results relatively quickly. And so you do end up looking for quick wins. And I'm not trying to diminish that. But I would also say you would kind of want to have a long-term approach to whatever it is that you're doing, just so that, so that you're building it in the right way. Because you'll, it will take twice as long, or, or there'll be a lot of stop-starts if you're kind of looking for that like quick, kind of like public win. And so just thinking about like, you know, foundational things that people need, which is they need training, they need support, they need recipes that they really trust. You'll need to get food in that. And that will adjust a lot of what everybody's day-to-day is. And so, you know, having some patience with them and really providing them with the right support. Otherwise, you could get those quick wins, but you could have the staff not be the happiest at times. And, and if you lose folks there, you start over. And then it's kind of like, it's a lot of sunk cost.
Wonderful. So between scratch cooking and prepared, pre-prepared meals, so what would be the time? Do we need to, so we have like about twenty minutes to eat and go back or something like that? So do we see, in your, in your experience, do you see any increased timeline, time in the line to get the food and go like?
There doesn't have to be. I mean, ultimately, everything that happens in the scratch cooking is like happening back here. And like, if I'm a server on the line, you know, I don't care if the chicken drumstick came from Tyson, or if it came from down the street and we marinated it, like they're just chicken drumsticks in front of me, and they take the same amount of time to serve. So all of that can be taken into consideration. You can pre-plate some scratch things. You, you know, certainly it's a consideration, you know, for sure. You can't try to do intricate things that have seven different scoops and things that you have to put on. You, you kind of have to like figure out how to make that extremely efficient. But that's the case now, you know, with, there's really no difference, I should say, from scratch cooking or pre-prepared foods, you know, for the most part, if you're serving bulk rather than, you know, like IW stuff, individually wrapped things, things like that. So it shouldn't impact service. And if it does, I would say it generally doesn't have to necessarily.
Well, one last question, then, on the sourcing side of the, the fresh food. I think one of the grants that were impacted, federal grants, were related to the sourcing fresh food, right?
That's correct for this year.
It was eliminated.
Right. So do, does it has any impact on our plans to move ahead with, not necessarily scratch, but overall sourcing?
I mean, we can still buy high-quality foods. That grant was specific to like local purchases, which tend to be a lot more expensive. So we probably would not go back to buying as much local food. But there's still a lot of high-quality fresh foods we can buy that aren't local.
Thank you.
I think that speaks to, you know, that impacts our philosophy more so than like what we're serving. Because that was something that we were really happy with.
Thank you.
I just have another question
Sure.
For you. With regard to, I, I think the district, maybe in New London where you are, you've been doing this for a while. Have you started to realize any cost savings from scratch cooking, once you move away from buying prepared foods? Like is there, like, I know initially, there's training and getting people up to speed, but then once you kind of get the program launched, is there cost savings involved at all?
I think there are opportunities. And again, it kind of, yeah. So basically, the way, like, if you think about a budget, for example, generally nationwide, they did a study, SNA did a study, I think, back in 2019. And they determined that as a portion of revenue, most school districts had about, spent about forty-five percent of their money from their food service program on food. And they spent forty-five percent of it on labor. And then they spent the remaining ten percent on other cost of goods. So like paper goods, chemicals, you know, maintenance, that sort of thing, equipment. And that's pretty standard nationwide. It holds true for most, for the most part. I would say in a general scratch cooking program, you're kind of flipping that a little bit. And you're looking to obviously increase labor. And with that, it's like, okay, something has to give, because otherwise you're going to eat into whatever surplus funds you have, or you're going to be reliant on these other kind of bumper funds from grants or things like that. It's just not sustainable. So what you need to do is drive down food costs. And, you know, that can sound counterintuitive, like, okay, I thought we were serving better food, but somehow we're paying less for it now. But processed foods, they cost more because you're paying for labor somewhere else. So I give a lot, I give an example all the time about just like pizza. You know, if you buy pre-made pizza, you know, a DiGiorno or something costs eight or nine bucks. You know, if you buy it from Wild Mike's or Big Daddy's or other places, these are like ubiquitous in school food. You know, they're about a dollar a portion, something like that for a slice of pizza. If you make pizza from scratch, like a dough, you know, it's going to cost you two pennies, three pennies. You're talking about flour, water, salt, and yeast. If you put, make the tomato sauce that you put on top, you know, you're talking about canned tomatoes. And a half a cup of canned tomatoes for a portion, again, you're, you're talking about seven cents, fifteen cents, something like that. If you use your USDA entitlements to buy shredded mozzarella cheese or shredded cheddar cheese, and that's going to go on top, you're not talking about any actual physical cash. So you're talking about creating like a portion that is really popular for pennies ultimately. And that's probably the most extreme example. There are other examples. So like, if you're doing a lot of center-of-the-plate stuff, so that means either the grain or the meat meat alternate, and you're getting that stuff from the USDA in terms of entitlement, or commodity foods, brown box is kind of, is what they're called, basically. You know, you, you're saving a lot of money compared to what you would spend to purchase that out on the open market. So in New London, for example, like we're running food costs as a portion of revenue, most years, some, somewhere between like thirty-three and thirty-seven percent. So that's a big reduction. We definitely trade that for labor costs. We are spending fifty to fifty-two percent every year on labor, and we're spending that, that offset. So collectively, it's still at about ninety percent. But that trade-off works. And we're highly scrutinizing of like what we spend on food and what we're bringing in. And when we do menu planning, like, is this just a nice thing that we're going to do three times a year? Or is this something that we can run on a menu cycle all the time because we can afford it? So like, we set a dollar seventy-five as our portion cost about how, what we need to create a meal from. We utilize offer versus serve, which is basically like we allow students the opportunity to turn down items of food that they don't want to reduce food waste. We're very scrutinizing about forecasting. We keep a menu cycle, or a, a number of menu items that are menued daily, small enough so that you can have a sense of like, use historical data to say like, okay, we served an all-beef, you know, kosher hot dog today, and we serve that against chicken fajitas. These things are always going against each other. So we know thirty percent of the kids are going to take this, and the other, and fifty percent of the kids are going to take this, rather than like switching it up all the time and just like guessing about how much to prepare. And then throwing away a lot of food at the end of the day. So there are certainly ways to do that. Some of them you could employ, and I'm sure they, you know, they do employ now. But that food cost thing is probably the biggest opportunity. You know, a fifty-pound bag of carrots that is not hyper-local, like Beth was talking about, is still great. You know, the carrots are still tasty and fine, and they're fresh. You know, but that's like, I don't know, I haven't bought a bag of carrots in a long time. But when I was a chef and developed, I'm still a chef, but when I was developing recipes and working in a school every day, you know, it was like twelve bucks for a fifty-pound bag. And you're talking about, that's like hundreds of portions, and it's cost nothing. You know, broccoli is extremely cheap. But if you're buying it, you know, pre-cut, pre-sliced, you know, ready to go, IQ after all of that stuff, like you're paying for those things. And, you know, if you have the labor in-house to do it, you could do it for really cheap.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank you as we start to take a look at this. This is extremely helpful. Dr. Sawyer.
Just want to thank Mr. Kennedy for sure, for his insight and, and the assessment of the program. I certainly want to thank Ms. Nichols and the team and the food service staff. I know you talked about a very successful contract negotiation. But I think I want to amplify what Mr. Kennedy said early in his presentation, that our food service staff takes a lot of pride in their work. They do a great job connecting with our kids. They, they care very much about the quality of what they're, they're providing. And, you know, we are looking forward to supporting them and trying to find ways to improve the quality of what we can provide and do it in a way that's cost-effective. And appreciate Mr. Girardi's leadership in bringing this forward when we did our initial strategic planning. And I'm really interested to know kind of how this information can now be taken to like, what would be a logical first step potentially for us to move in a direction, whether it's more scratch cooking, or be able to develop some more diverse menus and, that are appealing to our students and are nutritious. And it's a very important part of our students' day. And, you know, we're very pleased that what we provide now, we want to make it even better. So much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
The next time scheduled appointment is a school facility summer maintenance report. Mr. Girardi and Mr. Sexton will present a report on the summer 2025 maintenance projects, including capital repairs and improvements that were completed across all school buildings.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me.
Navigate here.
All right. Excellent. So my name is Joe Sexton. I'm the Public Buildings Division Manager here with the town. I was fortunate enough to sit in on this presentation last year. I believe it was my second week on the job. So I'm pleased to be able to sit back here tonight and deliver the presentation for you guys for some of our summer project updates and some of the things we've accomplished over this past summer. So the Public Buildings Division is comprised of multiple staff. Again, I'm the division manager. We have John Hamilton, who's our Assistant Division Manager for Custodial Services, Bill Tuttle, who's our Assistant Division Manager for Maintenance, Joel Manzi, who's our Assistant Division Manager, Plant Manager for the High School, and Patrick Finicom, our Assistant Division Manager for Night Custodial Operations. We have six maintenance craftsmen. That includes skilled maintenance craftsmen for plumbing and carpentry, as well as general maintenance craftsmen in our swing custodial staff, and then also fourteen custodians that help serve all the school and town buildings. So one of the biggest pieces of our summer cleaning, and one that's most readily recognizable when you first walk into the schools, is the refinishing of the floors throughout the buildings. It's a little over a million square feet of floor space that we go through and refinish and wax each year. This is one of our just normal routine cleaning aspects that we do over the summer. Also included with that cleaning routine is carpet extraction, filter changes, bathroom cleanings, and just basically preparing the facilities for the upcoming school year. One project that we continued from the previous year was AC installations in the school classrooms. This was a continuation of a project that was started the previous year. And this year, we were able to go through the high school and complete the entire second floor. Classrooms now have portable ACs, as well as the lower-level classrooms at the Oak School. And we started installing on the upper level of the Floral School as well. One of the, as the committee may know, we did the windows replacement at the Oak School last year. So one of the things we had to do for this year was go back and actually resize all of the vent covers for the windows. Luckily, we lucked out, and we were able to just trim down the existing and make them fit for the new windows. So we were able to get all those existing units back in place as well over this past summer. We did some smaller capital projects for the Patent School, including a fire, fire panel replacement. The existing panel was well past its useful life. We're no longer able to get any replacement parts. So that was one much-needed upgrade. We were lucky to get done this summer. Also, we replaced five exterior classroom emergency exit doors along the front side of the building. These were, again, very old, past their useful life, and would actually, in the hot weather, would swell up. And it was very difficult. I would have, myself would have to put a shoulder into the doors to try and get those open sometimes. So now everything opens beautifully, and we should be able to maintain those for years to come. Next would be the oak caulking for the exterior panels on the building. This was actually in addition to the window project that was done last year. It wasn't originally included in that scope of work and was added on as a change order, but it was a significant scope. So I wanted to make sure that we mentioned it here. And while this wasn't as flashy as the window replacement project, I would say this is just as important because it's going to help to maintain that building's integrity, to make it weather and watertight. So that will help to further maintain that building for years to come and extend its useful life. Another portion of work that we did was for the high school fieldhouse and high school dance studio, to apply a product called Recon for the hardwood gym floors. We also did this at the Patent Gym Floor, Gym Cafeteria Floor as well. This is kind of an intermediary step between the daily routine cleaning and then the, every few years, we'll come in and refinish, sand down those floors, and reapply polyurethane. So this is about a bit of a intermediary step. It helps to maintain the floor, brings that shine back and protects the finish, so that way we can get a few more years in between those maintenance cycles. And this is something that we do as part of our regular maintenance program every couple of years at each of the buildings. We did a small carpet upgrade for the offices at the Oak Middle School. This is going to be a phased project. So this is just the start, but we're going to be going through over the next couple of years to change out the carpets in those offices. They're all well past their useful life and really starting to show their age. So we're able to freshen up that space. And we plan to keep moving forward with those improvements in the years to come. A lot of people love the, the after photos for whenever we do projects. I personally love the before photos, because we get to see what we're tackling when we go through these projects. So these are some plumbing repairs that we did for the Patent Boiler Room for some valve changes, the High School Backflow Preventer, and the Beal Backflow Preventer. Again, these are pieces of equipment that people never think about, never see, but they're essential to the operation of the building and things that if we do have issues with them, it's going to cause bigger problems. So in my mind, these are just as important as some of those bigger, flashier projects. So in my mind, these are just as important as some of those bigger, flashier projects. We did some water filling station upgrades and replacements at a couple of the schools over the summer months, including at the High School, Parker Road Preschool, and I believe the Patent School. These are, between all the buildings, we have about twenty-five bottle fill stations. And we have a mix now of some older stations that are strictly bubblers, the combined stations like you see here in the photo. And we're gonna keep continuing to go through and update and upgrade those older stations to either retrofit or replace with the combines models that you see here that have both the bubbler and the bottle fill station. And we get great feedback from these. The students get a lot of use out of these, so we're happy to add these in.
May I ask a quick question there?
Of course.
So how many, so we replaced, we have twenty-five of these new ones. How many we have to replace?
So we have twenty-five total throughout the schools. Right now, we have one more, I believe, at the High School that we're looking to replace and one at the Oak School that we're looking to replace next.
Thanks.
Of course. We did quite a few tree removals across multiple campuses this year. We did tree removals at the High School, Patent School, Floral, Parker Road. I would say the most significant removal that we did was over at the High School. We had a sizable spruce tree on the corner of the building that was right in front of one of the cameras that looked over one of the busier parking lots. So I think that was a great, that we were able to get that out. And of course, we always work, whenever we remove a tree, we try and replace a tree. So we work with one of our contractors to find the best type of tree that we can plant in the best location so that way we don't go and block the camera again a few years down the line. Again, I love the before pictures, so we did some sprinkler repairs at all the schools as part of our fire safety and sprinkler inspections that we do each year. These are pictures from the High School, Oak and Floral Street, I believe. And while we did these, they were actually relatively small repairs. But as you can see from the pictures, if we didn't catch these or let these go, these could easily become bigger issues with much more expensive repairs and much bigger cleanup. So it's good that we can catch these through our annual inspections. And our custodial staff is really good about finding these when they go through and change out ceiling tiles. If we find an issue up above, we'll always make sure to move on that quickly. Really, two points with this slide. So we did some LED upgrades for the High School this past year over in the locker rooms. But we also did a, had a grant application in with Green Communities. And we just received the award a few weeks back for that grant. So while those funds haven't been appropriated yet and that work hasn't started yet, we're always looking forward to the next project in the Public Buildings Division. And we rewarded roughly eighty-five thousand dollars, which will get us close to three-hundred-and-fifty additional LED fixtures for the High School. And that building won't be completely LEDs, but it'll be very close after this next leg of the project, which will probably take place in the spring or next summer. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much.
I have a question on the oak caulking. You said there was a change order. Is,
Correct.
Is that still all under the MSBA funding for the windows? Is that all included?
Yes.
Oh, excellent.
Yes, we had the funding available. It was called out as the contractors going through and doing the work. After much discussion, we decided now is the best time to do that work while we have everyone mobilized on site. It did draw the project out a little bit longer than initially expected, but I think it was the right choice. And again, it's gonna help maintain that building into the future.
Thank you.
Of course.
And it was considered because there were some savings through the window installation that we were able to leverage some funds with.
Exactly.
Right, perfect.
Quick question. Thank you for the presentation.
Of course.
The AC units, the portable AC units, this is a continuation from last year. Is there more coming or is that, does that wrap up the installs for the AC?
No, so we still have some rooms still to do. This is just what we were able to get done within the summer months. So we're gonna plan on keep moving forward with that project. And actually, Chris helped to identify a few more rooms that are high needs. And we're actually gonna try and get those taken care of in the next few weeks during the school year. Our staff starts early so we can sneak in the buildings. And once we have a template laid out for the respective buildings, it's sort of a cookie cutter and we can just keep moving along.
Got it. Any feedback from staff? Like, obviously, something's better than nothing, but I'm curious.
We've probably had the nicest September opening.
Yeah, right.
Weather, so the need for them, they have been turned on on some days. It hasn't been those days where it's ninety-five degrees and we're really relying on them to change the temperature in the room. But having said that, you know, the, we've got a lot of thank yous from folks who walked back in not knowing that they were going to get an AC unit just based on, you know, what we're able to order, what we're able to install in time. And then again, to Mr. Sexton's point, identifying some additional spaces where we're hearing from either the staff member themselves or from program directors around students who may have some special needs around temperature control to be able to provide that. Again, as we've shared in the past, you know, it doesn't make the rooms feel like you're driving in your car with the AC full blast. You know, it really does take the edge off.
Sure.
Especially when kind of, when the rooms are managed across floors, that really is a good help. And there's been a lot of positive feedback. We've had some issues with, you know, fuses being blown and some folks not, you know, turning on their interactive whiteboard and it'll blow the fuse because you can't run both at the same time. Mr. Sexton and his team have been responding and they're running new lines across buildings. So it's been a really nice coordinated effort between the schools and public buildings around, you know, providing a more comfortable space for our students and teachers.
That's great. Thank you for your partnership and getting our schools ready. Appreciate it.
Of course.
Well, thank you very much for the report. We always, you know, appreciate hearing all of the work that gets done over the summer. It's amazing because it's not, I mean, it's about eight weeks, you know, you have like eight to ten weeks to get in there and do all of these projects. And you always have our schools looking so beautiful and ready to go and they're maintained so well. So really appreciate the partnership with the town to keep these buildings looking their best and functioning so well for our staff and students. So thank you very much, Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Similarly, and I oftentimes, if I'm visiting schools, different schools across the district with someone from the outside, they inevitably think the school is younger than it is because of the quality of the maintenance and the upkeep. And we really appreciate the work that the Public Buildings Team, our custodians, the maintenance craftsmen, you know, all do to try to get ahead of things and then respond when we have needs. And I know that Mr. Sexton's been here just a little over a year now and he's developed a really good partnership with Mr. Girardi. I know that they communicate frequently. The responsiveness has been excellent when we have needs and we appreciate that. It's a different model. I mean, some school districts have a model where all this would be under the office of the school department. We have a partner department in public buildings, in the DPW that, but because we have such a good relationship, it works really well. So very appreciative of all the work that was done over the summer to get things ready and then on an ongoing basis during the year. So thank you.
Of course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Ms. Boucher, may I ask if we could take an item out of order? We have a brief item about a vote on substitutes for food services. Since Ms. Nichols is still here, it might be nice to just take that now if you're amenable to that. I think it would be brief.
So we have a vote on the food service substitute pay rate. The substitute rate for food service workers was last adjusted in April of twenty-twenty-three. Given that the recent contractual agreement between the Shrewsbury School Committee and the SEIU Local Eight-eight-eight Shrewsbury Cafeteria Workers increased wages to be within the local market, making a market adjustment for food substitute is sought to increase the candidate pool by increasing pay for this group, which is not part of the union. And Mr. Girardi or Ms. Nichols, if you just wanted to give us a bit of background and then we could take a vote.
Sure. Sorry, I have a little difficulty disconnecting from the previous report. Thank you. I think you said it well in that we've been growing with our ability to bring our staffing models up to market value, both for the cooks and the other folks who work in the Food Services Department. Ms. Nichols was smart enough to take a look and also with the understanding that we have a difficult time filling subpositions. So through her recommendation and something that I think is also a really, it's an important recommendation is to, as we're moving other folks up in their hourly rates, to adjust the same for our substitutes, to keep them kind of on a similar trajectory than the other folks, with the hope that we're attracting good people who are interested in coming in and filling those important positions when they are needed. So with that, we are recommending an increase, which the last time an increase was made was April two thousand twenty-three. But again, with markets the way they are and with trying to attract folks, we're making a recommendation to go from the current fifteen dollars and fifty cents per hour to seventeen dollars an hour, which showed in your packet compared to some local districts, brings us right into market.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? There being none, I'll take a motion that the committee vote to increase the food service substitute hourly pay rate from fifteen dollars and fifty cents to seventeen dollars an hour effective September fifteenth of twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a report on the district goals progress for twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five. The set of strategic goals and action steps for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year were approved by the committee to support the Shrewsbury Public School Strategic Plan. And we've received a report which provided a status and associated outcomes for each of these goals. And Ms. Clowder and Dr. Lazzott will provide an update and be available to answer our questions.
Thank you for the opportunity to celebrate our accomplishments from last year as we look ahead to next year. Joining me tonight is Dr. Lazzott. And essentially, we're going to go together through the presentation, but what we're sharing represents the hard work of a lot of people, from educators working in the classroom to district leadership team to central office and to all of you and garnering support for us. This graphic serves as a reminder about the strategic planning process. So as you know, following deep engagement with the community in twenty-twenty-three, the school committee approved a five-year strategic plan to guide our work towards three commitments. And last year marked the second year of our strategic plan. So tonight, we're here to update you on that year so that we can review successes and needs in advance of setting goals for the coming year.
Our portrait of a Shrewsbury graduate, our vision for students informs our planning. It's like GPS, always there as a guide. Amy and I are driving together tonight and we're joined by our colleagues Meg Belcito, Chris Girardi and Dr. Sawyer and others who are not here who have contributed to this update. And we'll talk about the progress that we made last year. We look forward to that.
So as you recall, we had three commitments: educational excellence, enhanced well-being of all, and the optimization of resources. And you'll hear highlights about all of them this evening. And I just wanna remind everyone who's tuning in at home that there's always a detailed report that supplements the presentation and that will be posted on the district website shortly. As you might recall, working with focused schools helped us to really appreciate the power and importance of reflection as a tool for kind of thinking about and adjusting to our plans as we go. So while it's a helpful guide, or GPS as Jane referenced, it doesn't lock us in. And we wanna make sure that we're mindful of the incremental progress we're making over time and also continue to challenge ourselves with ambitious goals. So as we're thinking about our commitment to continuous improvement, we notice in the whole, we have a lot to celebrate. One of the things that was really striking to me was the report itself extended to eighteen pages. And so this is an abbreviated summary of some of those pages. But there are a lot of people to acknowledge this evening, starting with all of you. And your support of the district goals and our action steps is really key to our success. But I would be remiss if I didn't mention that part of the joy of aligning the school improvement plans with the strategic plan that we celebrated last year was that I think everybody who works in Shrewsbury Public Schools can see themselves in the work. And so as we celebrate this work, we need to celebrate those efforts on behalf of everyone in the district. So here are some of the big highlights. We successfully completed, you know, the process to join the MSBA for our eligibility phase for the potential high school expansion. You heard the building committee got underway last night. And that's, again, doesn't commit us to something, but gives us an option for some really important ways to adjust space constraints at the high school. We continued to increase the number of students at the high school that are enrolled in advanced coursework. We exceeded our target for reducing the number of students in K and in need of intervention. We implemented the literacy program, K to six, so last year was year one. This coming year will be year one for grade seven and eight because at the end of the selection process last year, they adopted the same program, which is really helpful. And we expanded tiered supports for students in terms of mental and behavioral health.
We received over three-hundred thousand dollars in philanthropic donations to support key programming in all of our schools. Our start time change resulted in more sleep for Shrewsbury High School students and that was appreciated. We exceeded our goal of reducing chronic absenteeism, reducing by twenty-four percent the number of students absent eighteen days or more in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And we expanded career exploration opportunities to Oak Middle School. As you know, our, we had in the report, twenty-eight guest speakers volunteered their time and energy during Fridays at Oak and a total of five-hundred-and-fifty-five students attended those lunch and learn sessions.
It was amazing to see the energy at Oak when that was happening, all those community helpers. So we'll talk a little bit more about the impact of those because the plan in itself is wonderful. But if it doesn't make changes for students and staff and families, then we fall short of what our hopes are. So the next slides will illustrate the impact of our work with each of these commitments and go slightly into more detail. So I think, when I think about our commitment to educational excellence, one of the things that strikes me where we've made a lot of progress is establishing systems and consistency, both in terms of curriculum materials, but also in terms of the way we respond to student needs, both from an academic standpoint and from a behavioral health, social-emotional standpoint. So you can see here some of the highlights that we have is that we've been, as we've been, you know, celebrating the importance of high-quality instruction and the impact that that has, we've also built systems for collecting data about student progress and tracking progress from semester to semester. We've got processes in place for identifying students in need from a social-emotional and mental health standpoint. And lots of teams have coordinated their work such that we saw a significant decrease in the number of students requiring intervention. And that our goal was to reduce that by ten percent. We actually reduced it overall by eleven percent. And we saw a slight improvement in the numbers of students reaching grade-level benchmarks at some grades. We're hopeful that the implementation of the new literacy program at Oak will fuel more progress there. But we've made significant strides at the high school in terms of providing more students opportunity for advanced coursework and for career tech ed opportunities. And I don't wanna read the slide too. You can see some of those highlights. But under the umbrella of educational excellence, we're looking at efforts at all schools. But I think we have a common approach where we're looking to really boost student ownership and amplify student voice and provide options for students to have rigorous coursework. I know that in terms of talking about the literacy implementation, wanted to kind of give a little bit more detail there. Essentially, when we're looking at literacy, we have two different metrics that we're looking at for monitoring progress. One metric is how many students are qualifying for intervention and what are those rates looking like over time? We're hoping that as we look at it by cohort, in terms of last year's kindergartners, this year's first graders, next year's second graders, fewer of those students require intervention so that the cohort of kids in need shrinks overall. But we're also looking that with the implementation of curriculum, fewer first graders need intervention because we've strengthened our tier-one practices. And you can, so that's one metric. The other metric is how students are meeting benchmarks. And so this first one that goes with our goal two-point-two on And so this first one that goes with our goal two-point-two under educational excellence is around benchmark proficiency at the beginning of last year and at the end of last year. And you can see many grades we improved our ability to meet the benchmark overall. We saw a very slight gain in the number of students reaching benchmarks. And you can see a pattern of it being easier to reach benchmark in the lower grades. Part of that is as kids are embarking on a reading journey, they're focusing more on foundational reading. And then the, the complexity of the tasks that they're doing as they reach fourth grade and beyond require proficiency in both reading and writing and more in-depth understanding of comprehension. So meeting a grade-level benchmark for foundational reading, which is the thrust of K-two versus kind of being able to apply that and also demonstrate comprehension, is a higher benchmark. We think students should reach that. It just, we're going to see a slower rate of progress depending on how many, how many years of experience students have had with the new curriculum. So in any implementation, it takes time for a change to go from implementing teachers to affecting student outcomes. The benchmark is the trickier kind of metric to wrestle with, but I wanted to be transparent in looking at what we're, what we're hoping to see over time.
Ms. Clowder, just on that point for a moment too, is it, maybe you could add clarity in terms of the benchmark increases in difficulty over the course of the year as well? So that the benchmark students are held to in the spring is a higher benchmark than what they were held to in the fall?
Right. So if you think about the span of a, of a year for each student, they, the goal for the state benchmark is mastery of all of the grade-level standards by the end of the year. And so at the beginning, you wouldn't expect kids to demonstrate total mastery, but so the, the benchmark assessment gets more complicated or, or harder for kids as they get closer to May. We still want students to be able to meet that because they should demonstrate more content mastery over time. That's the whole, that's the power of our teachers, right? But it makes it harder to compare metric windows. We want more students to show mastery at the same times. And so I, and in parsing through the data with Dr. Sawyer, I was thinking, we want to keep the time window we're, we're talking about for both metrics, both intervention and benchmarks the same. So we're comparing fall of last year to spring of last year. But comparing benchmarks in terms of reaching proficiency and, and hitting our benchmark in terms of the number of kids that qualify for intervention is slightly different. And, and I think that that, I appreciate you pointing that out.
Can I just ask a question while we're on this before?
Sure.
Is this, if this is STAR Assessment Benchmark, correct, versus like a D, it used to be something different that we use, right? A reading assessment?
Yeah, we used to use the developmental reading assessment, which was more subjective and not in line with the science of reading. So one of the things that, you know, when we, when we're talking about our successes and the importance of teachers being credited in the work, we've done a lot of teacher training and, and asked teachers to support the way they assess kids, and they've made that transition really seamlessly. So the STAR Assessment is something that kids take online, and it's an adaptive assessment, so it really adjusts to how well students are doing. And then it gives us feedback around how well students are meeting the benchmark. And we use some of those metrics to decide what level of tiered support students that are not meeting the benchmark will get. So students that are farthest from that benchmark will get the highest degree of intervention at tier three from our reading specialists. Students that are closest to the benchmark will get support in the classroom from their own teacher, either during a wind block or, you know, during class. And then there's a kind of a middle ground with our literacy tutors for students that require some support, but not quite to the degree of tier three.
Thank you, that's helpful.
You're welcome. Okay, so the other metric I was talking about is the number of students that qualify for intervention. And here you can see, we were looking to, to reduce the percentage of students who qualify for intervention from the fall to the spring. I wanted you to see the progression of what that looked like over the course of the year. But if you can see here, the numbers we're talking about is, oops, I hate when I do that, sorry. I keep thinking my cursor is a pointer and it's not. So we're looking at the top row where it says fall two thousand twenty-four across, and then the spring two thousand twenty-five, and then you can see the change there at the bottom. So when you see that metric of, we reduced it by an average of eleven percent from fall to spring, that's all grades. But if you can see the average for K-four is a little bit better. Again, the theory being that the smaller the gap in student mastery, the easier it is to close that gap. So if a kindergartner comes in without knowing their letters, it's easier to close that gap in terms of not, not knowing their letters than if we get a kid moving in from out of state who's grappling with not knowing their letters in third grade. That's just a lot farther to go. And you might think that that's kind of an outlandish example. There are few students that present that challenge with us, but it, it is something that we grapple with.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
For fall two thousand twenty-five, have we started the STAR assessments already?
Yes, I think that, and Kelly can maybe help me. The end of the assessment window is the fifteenth, right? Yeah. So people have a little bit more time to get that in, but we should have it released soon. Any other questions on these two slides? Okay.
Go back to the other one.
Go back to this one.
Keep going.
Wasn't I just there?
Um, that's it. We're going to move on to enhanced well-being of all. And as I mentioned earlier, we had a, we saw a twenty-four percent reduction in the number of students considered chronically absent from seven hundred twenty-one to five hundred forty-six last year. Our regional youth health survey indicated that Shrewsbury High School students reported getting eight or more hours of sleep, so that increased from twenty percent to twenty-eight percent. And there was an increase in number of students responding favorably to the category of feeling a sense of belonging at Shrewsbury High School by two percent, and that was through the Panorama Survey data. The expansion of RISE, Meg had reported in the spring, program saved Shrewsbury Public Schools more than three hundred thousand dollars in out-of-district placement costs. Again, the implementation of elementary therapeutic programs to support our students' social, emotional, and behavioral needs has proven to be extremely helpful and positive, and we continue to work with our teams each day on the programming, particularly around the social, emotional learning pieces. Our SEL leadership team positively contributed to the pilot of our new SEL curriculum entitled Wayfinder, and we are just starting to use that curriculum now in the fall. Our PBIS team leads at all of our schools and the team members have really been extremely instrumental in providing professional development and support to the, our entire school communities. And we continue to work with the May Institute very closely, their coaches in that regard. We continue also to work on providing opportunities for staff to connect with one another during the school day and outside of the school day. And there's more information in the report, but offering things such as book studies where we gather after school to talk about books and have that time together. And through the help of DESI's Social Emotional Learning Behavioral Academy, over the past couple of years, we've had opportunities to learn and grow from colleagues across the state, and that's also proven helpful in a number of ways.
Before I move on, I just think there's a natural corollary between the work we're trying to do in terms of academic curriculum and the work that Jane and her team have done in getting everyone consistent in terms of the social, emotional learning too.
And Meg.
And, and, and Meg in terms of behavioral health.
Yes.
So I think that's a really good example of, there's a lot of hands in this work. And so, and when we come to this commitment, I want to make sure we're acknowledging Chris and his team because his fingerprints are all over this work, most importantly in terms of establishing a fiscally responsible budget process and then helping us to really meet that target of expanding the override. I think the other, other pieces that's really important to talk about as the, we're considering kind of what our ambitious goals are and the resources that we need to meet them, is that we've been successful in part because we have garnered a lot of grant funds and philanthropic donations to support some of this work, from getting the DESI grant to purchase the literacy materials to really launching some of the innovation pathways at the high school. And I know securing some of those resources in terms of fostering internships. And so I, I think it's important to mention that when we talk about people who've contributed to our success, we're not just talking about the school community either, we're talking about the community large. One of the things that's really positive and helpful is the successful negotiation of four contracts. There are a lot of districts that have not enjoyed a kind of strong relationship that we have with our local representatives, and we really appreciate that and the energy it gives us to kind of move forward. Maple and Maine has sponsored several different community groups, and it's a really wonderful hub for the neighborhood as well as learning opportunity for the students that are enrolled in that program. And you can see some of the work of HR. Barb isn't, isn't here, and Kelly is continuing that work, to be sure. But Lindsay and Barb worked very hard last year to really look at our paraprofessional experience and the pipeline from being a paraprofessional to a professional educator, in part because we have an opportunity there to kind of grow expertise in-house. Many of our paraprofessionals contribute to classroom culture and support intervention efforts, but also looking at student teaching opportunities. And so the partnership that we have, uh-oh, with Worcester State helped us to kind of think about how we might grow that opportunity. And I'm sorry, you do some talking, won't I get us?
Other growth opportunities, working with paraeducators who are interested in becoming teachers, that has been, it's proving to be quite successful in addition to ongoing educator leadership opportunities. I referenced the PBIS team leads, but there's a number of ways in which educators across the board and counselors really assume leadership roles, and we all benefit from their leadership. So we're very grateful.
And we mentioned it on the bubble, but the advancement of the high school projects with the MSBAs is something certainly that we're really hopeful about. So again, we have a lot to be grateful for. We have, you know, done some reflecting together with the leadership team, and I'm sure within each building, as, as principals present their school improvement plans, they'll be reflecting too. There are places where I wish frankly, we'd made some more progress in meeting benchmarks, and, and we'll continue to work on that. But I also am very proud of the, the data team cycles that we've built, the approach we've taken to looking at instruction in consistent ways, instructional rounds, the way we've tried to connect what we're seeing when we're in, in buildings to professional development and support teachers in a range of ways because different teachers have different needs professionally. And we'll continue to kind of think about the gains we've made so far so that that informs the work we do, starting with the joint school councils and thinking about what the coming year's district goals should be. So at this point, we, you know, look forward to working more towards this as we move from two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-seven, and invite any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you. I think, you know, we always have accomplishments, but we're always looking, you know, how do we move that needle forward? What do we do next as we engross the school district? So looking, you know, the literacy program is something that we felt very strongly on, we've invested in and hope to see more improvement in that area. And one question I have, and it's really not a question, maybe it's, you know, as we look at goals and priorities for the upcoming year, you know, what is a short-term goal for that literacy area where we are identifying these students? How quick do we move in that process to kind of capture, to get them to the, you know, an area that we feel that they're mastering? So I mean, the, I think the, the longer it takes, maybe it's good in some ways, but it's also they're missing out on not being able to fully understand and comprehend and read. So just like looking at short-term ways to make it quicker. And also, when we look, talk about the upcoming strategic plan and goals for next year, tying that into the DMG report and the recommendations that they made to us as a district, I think that's really important. That was a, a well-done report for a lot of reasons, but I think as we look to the future, making sure that we're looking at those recommendations and tie that in to what we're already doing and start to improve upon. So thank you.
You're welcome. In terms of that first piece, one of the things that we were able to do at the end of last year that was new for us but really powerful was to look at not just the, the progress that students at, at the end of every level were making, but to orient the teams at the receiving school for the students that were coming to them. So Sherwood was able to look at the needs of the incoming grade four class and to think a little bit about that as part of their transition process in ways that before, we certainly shared data, but not in that powerful way. And we know that we need not wait. So people started pulling groups this week in terms of intervention. Our reading specialists are already meeting with kids.
Great.
Because they're assuming that the first thing to do is to check in with the kids that are receiving intervention that they, that they are having in front of them. So we're certainly on the same page.
When you talk about data, because we want to be data-driven, so having that information to provide, to advance, I think is where, you know, where we want to look at data, moving that needle for us. So I think that's a perfect example of where it does work.
Yeah. We also, for the first time this year, having looked at the needs of the outgoing grade eight class at Oak, have carved out some time for our reading specialist at Oak to end the day so that she can be present after school for our ninth graders who are at the high school to continue supporting them so that we can push some of our students into more advanced coursework sooner with that support. So we're in the process of trying to schedule that, but it was really gratifying that when she reached out to families to say, you know, would you be willing to support your student if they could take the late bus and stay for extra session after school? She just, she built such strong relationships that she got a lot of yeses.
That's great.
And for a high school student to accept that level of intervention, I think is a real win. So those are the kinds of things that we're working to make more efficient.
Which is great.
And it, it just, it feels frustrating that the progress is slow, but also when I think about implementation, we're going to have a slight lag in terms of changing curriculum and, and seeing student impact, in part because we continue to work on our pacing so that we get to all four units in a year. So I appreciate everybody understanding that, and I know our teachers do too.
Yeah, I just appreciate the report. I think there's a lot to be proud of here in this, in the outcomes. I think it, it's, I don't think it's until a moment like this where you can really appreciate how much work was accomplished last year. I think at the beginning of every year, we always have our annual dinner with the senior leadership. We go through kind of, you know, what the goals, you know, should look like for the year. And I, I can remember just being, you know, sitting at school committee, looking up this, you know, pretty significant list, thinking like, how are we going to get all that done? You know? And that, the list was longer, I think, when we started, right? And, you know, I, I can just imagine from your perspective, from leadership, from staff, teachers, you know, everybody that make up the district, you know, it, there are days where it can be a grind, and you wonder if you're making, you know, an impact and kind of chipping away at, at the, at the plan. And then you see what, in my opinion, is, is kind of a composite performance appraisal for the district, like, how are we doing? How are we tracking to our strategic plan? And I think this really tells, you know, a good story, really positive, a lot of positive outcomes. I mean, I think among the slides you shared, there are five slides that kind of give you the highlights, but if you look at the report, there are sixteen pages of what the plan is, what the action steps were, and what the outcomes were. And definitely encourage the public to read through all sixteen pages because there's some impressive numbers. And I, I do love that we've become such a data-driven district, you know, to see, you know, exactly like the percentages of kind of, even if we're moving the needle, you know, plus two percent or plus, you know, thirteen percent, it's still forward progress. So definitely great report. There's a lot to consume, but a lot to be proud of, not only from a community perspective, but, you know, certainly from everybody that is driving these outcomes in the district. So, thank you.
Just to tap onto that too, I, I, you know, when we do sit down at the beginning of the year and you look at that document, you think to yourself like, these are really lofty goals? Like, I, I hope we get through all of them, but then you're like, if we don't get to half of them, that's okay. But you hit all of them, and they've, we've done them well. And I'm grateful for the work that goes into planning and implementing. So many people touch this. It's, you know, at the district level, it's teachers, it's paras, everybody owns a piece of this. And, you know, you look back at what that big document was and, and it turned out great. And I look forward to now building off of what happened last year and setting those goals for next year. And, you know, setting those what we think right now is a lofty goal, but then coming back, and we've far succeeded that. So this is, this is great, and I appreciate everybody that did their work to get us to where we are so that you can show us this huge accomplishment from last year.
Yeah, so, yeah, I totally agree. Thanks for the great work that the entire team has done. One quick question on the, the slide that is, so just trying to see whether chronic absenteeism- absenteeism, so there's a significant drop in absenteeism. So is there a specific reason why we are seeing that significant drop? Is it an anomaly or is it going to be a system?
We hope it's not an anomaly. I, this is another place where I feel like I'm representing the work of lots of other people, mostly at the building level, but also Meg's team having developed kind of a system of how do we track and respond to students and what are some, once we've identified students at risk of chronic absenteeism, how do we lean in and figure out what the reasons behind that absenteeism are, whether it's, you know, school phobia or whether it's just executive functioning? And how do we set goals and work individually with kids and sometimes with families to improve that outcome? But I think part of it is, you know, a credit to Dr. Sawyer, sitting with the leadership team and looking at those metrics on a regular basis last year to say, how are we doing with attendance? What do you do? When do you send a letter home? We should all have the same trigger of when, you know, the number of days that send a letter home, that kind of thing. So I hope for sure it's not an anomaly. I hope we consider, because we can't teach kids that aren't with us, right? But it's the first year that we really have that data. And so we're going to continue to monitor.
And as I read the principal updates that are sent weekly and certainly Dr. Sawyer's updates, the specificity around the importance of coming to school each and every day and doing your best to arrive at school, come prepared, those are very important reminders from our, both our leadership team and teachers sending similar messaging.
No, I agree. So I think I saw the new way of putting it in a different colored apples, like seeing in the new email, emails about absenteeism. So that's a visually appealing, recognizable way. So one other question I'm looking at it, looking at it is, so does the start time change has any impact on the absenteeism, reducing absenteeism? Is there correlation?
Perhaps. I mean, I defer to other people if there's more details to add about it.
Yeah, I mean, the start time change has been in place for a couple of years now. So I mean, this is like one year-over-year piece. And the chronic absenteeism is something that was a phenomenon across the nation, certainly across the state after COVID. And, you know, getting kids back into more routines of coming to school and not staying out, you know, has been a challenge. I think that, I don't have the data in front of me, you know, I think that, you know, we still had some struggles with, you know, tardy students at the high school, even despite the changes in start time. We were gratified to see some improvements in the statistics of how much sleep kids were getting for sure. Anecdotally, you know, we had feedback that people appreciated, felt their kids were better rested. And it's very hard to isolate those variables. That's one of the things that's a struggle for us, of course, is so many different things that go into these pieces. The high school in particular, they tightened up their policy on how many absences you could have before you started to lose credit. And, you know, that's a model at the high school that I think students paid attention to because frankly, there were students saying, well, I could take another day here and it's not going to cost me, so to speak. So, you know, we reduced that number. I think that had an impact. But all the things that were mentioned before, with schools being very intentional, reaching out directly to have conversations with families about, and sometimes families would be surprised because if it's a day here, a day there, it can add up. And it's like, what do you mean they've been out eight times? Well, they've been out eight times. As opposed to, and then, you know, there's the challenge of families who go away, they go away for vacations during school time. We certainly discourage that. That's a challenge for us in terms of, you know, catching kids up afterwards. And, you know, it does have an impact when kids aren't there for their, for their learning. But we were gratified to see the change and, you know, we're hopeful that we'll continue to see that progress in terms of improving attendance overall.
Thanks for the clarification. And that gets me one more question on that. So that, which means we can definitely segment out where we are having chronic absenteeism and where we are improving there, right? With, maybe you have that data.
There are statistics for each school.
Right, right. Perfect, wonderful. One last question and I will stop. So with the grade three proficiency benchmarking, our grade five, so there is a change like minus four, so that looks like one where it has little, is there a specific reason why we are?
I think part of it, one of the things that we're looking at is the pacing for K to two seems to be very on par with what the program pacing recommendation is. And it seems to be more of a challenge at some grade spans and grade five is one of them. We've taken a deep dive in terms of looking at what the degree of the shift is from kind of old practice to new practice. It's not been new at Sherwood to have novel studies, for example, but I think asking kids to do close reading has been a shift for everyone. And so part of that is just supporting teachers as they make a change in their teaching practices. And I know, you know, for the middle level, we're asking teachers in fifth grade to embrace some foundational reading skills as they're teaching kind of Greek roots and vocabulary in ways that weren't previously something we asked of middle school folks to do. So in a, in a way, we've been adding, I think, to the level of complexity of teaching English language arts. But certainly, you know, we've brought in some more support within the grades where we've seen more support is needed and we'll continue to do that.
Wonderful. I think overall it looks, the numbers looks good. And then, to me, I'm very confident as long as we keep the sustainment and improve, improve in the path, I think we will be the best.
So when I mentioned the benchmark assessment being the measure of mastery of the year, one of the things we did was we looked at, so when we got, you know, our MCAS results, we looked at where the standards where kids fell short were, and many of them were in the farther units of the curriculum. So as our pacing increases, we'll get to those places before the MCAS test. Similarly, we'll get to that before they're assessed for mastery. And so I'm hoping as we improve our pacing, we'll also improve our ability to have kids have more standards sooner. And that's certainly something that's in play for all of our, all of our grades.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just like to thank you both very much for the presentation tonight and also for the extremely detailed report. I love the format that you've kept to kind of use the strategic plan and then just kind of update us every year and put in what you've, what's been accomplished. It's just so much to celebrate. And I would echo my colleague's comments to thank, you know, we know all of the work that goes into, you know, trying to reach all of these different goals and all of the folks that are involved. So we'd just like to say thank you to everyone that's, you know, contributed so much to the district in the last year to make all of these different things happen. Dr. Sawyer, would you like to have anything to add?
Also, just want to say thank you. I mean, it's, I'm very proud of the team that we have, all the different roles in the district that contribute to these successes in different ways. The support of the school committee, the support of our parent community, you know, the leadership team to continue to focus on these areas. I think that, you know, of all the time that I've, we've been doing the work, this has been the most intentional strategic planning work and goal-setting we've done. And I think we've done it in a way that's been really helpful and I really am going to encourage as we move into our, you know, next phase here of creating the specific goals for this coming school year. I think you've heard it from some of the members tonight, staying the course. We've invested a lot of time and energy, we think, in the right places. We know that we're seeing, you know, some results up front, but it's, we're getting momentum. And I think that's, we know that organizational success comes from sticking with things long enough to really start to have that impact. And I think that that's something, not to start chasing a new flavor of the month, but to keep on course. And we're looking forward to doing that. But I think we've done some really outstanding things for kids and the schools and we're looking forward to another year ahead. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is taking a look at the no homework calendar for the 2025, 2026 school year. Per school committee policy, 523, the homework policy, each year the superintendent will present a recommended calendar of no homework dates for the school year for the approval of the school committee. And once approved, the dates and expectations for no homework periods will be communicated to students, families and educators periodically throughout the year. Dr. Sawyer has provided us with a memo with the recommended no homework calendar for this year. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer for further comments.
Thank you. So this will be the third year that we have a no homework calendar. The calendar is structured very similarly to last year's, which made some adjustments based on feedback from the first year. The first year, there were actually fifteen separate no homework dates. That was reduced to nine last year. And this year, the calendar you see has ten specific no homework dates. And then based on where the dates fall, that includes the six weekends that are essentially no homework weekends. The approach is that, you know, per the policy, the idea is to have some times when no homework is due for all students in order to provide the opportunity to either catch up on things, do family, connect with family and relieve a little bit of that pressure from the day-to-day work of homework that is provided. Some of those dates, we connect with certain major religious holidays because we know those are times where many students are going to require accommodations anyways if homework were to be assigned. So we look at that sort of a two-for-one, so to speak, in terms of being able to address the policy of providing some opportunities for no homework dates and also take some, not have those students who would be missing homework or not have an ass, major assessment due to a religious holiday, to not have to make that up at another time, that it's consistent with everyone else. It's really important to emphasize, as we have the past couple of years, there are certainly many religious holidays, there are not no homework dates. Any family and student can avail themselves of that accommodation, which by our own local policy and by Massachusetts state law, we need to provide reasonable accommodations if someone needs to miss school or couldn't complete an assignment because they're attending to a religious obligation. So that's something we'll continue to emphasize as we go through the year and share the information about the, about the calendar. In terms of the dates themselves, this fall, you know, the ten different dates, one of them is connected to Rosh Hashanah, with no homework due on September 23rd. After that, the Jewish High Holiday of Yom Kippur, so no homework would be assigned, that would be to do on Thursday, October 2nd. Over the Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend is a no homework weekend. The Diwali holiday, which is the major day during that multi-day feast, is that no homework will be due on Tuesday, October 21st. The Thanksgiving break again, and all the major school holiday breaks are no homework periods. So Thanksgiving, December vacation, February vacation, April vacation are all connected there. The Eid Al Fiddur, there'll be no homework assigned that's due on Friday, March 20th. That can shift because that holiday is not declared until right at that point, depending on when that is declared. But, so we'll obviously communicate when that time comes. Last year, the religious holiday of Easter happened to fall during the April vacation. This year, it's outside of that. So the Easter holiday weekend, there will be no homework due that Monday. And then, again, I mentioned April vacation would be a period. You know, depending on where different holidays fall, last year, for example, Lunar New Year was a no homework date. This year, that happens to fall during February vacation. So from year to year, there'll be some shifts depending on those kinds of pieces. But again, it results in ten dates, six weekends. And of course, ten dates out of 180 school days is a relatively small number. But the feedback we've had over the past few years, it does provide some really good relief in different ways. And at the high school level, we know we have seniors who are doing college applications in the fall and some of those dates are really helpful for them to concentrate on those elements. At other points during the year, it does allow families to focus on family events that may or may not be connected to, whether that's just a general, you know, holiday vacation or a religious holiday. It provides that opportunity. So that's the approach again this year. I'd ask the school committee to vote to approve this calendar this evening and we will start communicating it right away.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions the committee has.
Anyone have any questions, comments?
I just wanted to add one comment, I think, regarding the holidays or the festivals that fall on that long stretch of multiple days. I just want to make sure that parents understand that as Dr. Sawyer mentioned, there is reasonable accommodation will be provided when the students talk to the teachers, work with the teachers. So just to make sure that it is not one specific day, but they can always discuss. So I appreciate that flexibility built into that calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. I think we've gotten really good feedback from families and students on the no homework calendar. And I'm glad to see that we're continuing the policy this year. With that, I will have a vote, that the committee vote to approve the no homework calendar for the 2025, 2026 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a report to vote and accept the FY26 grants. Mr. Girardi is here to present on this. Federal and state grants are an important source of funding for our school operations. Entitlement grants are established and allocated at the state and federal level. Entitlement grants are non-competitive and are awarded automatically on the basis of defined formulas that differ by grant. And Mr. Girardi has provided us a report which includes the amounts of funding the district is receiving in FY26 as well as a five-year history.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So received in the packet is a rundown of each of the grants that we receive. And this year, I felt to kind of change up the way that I present it in a way that takes those grants and shows kind of their increases, whether they've increased, decreased, expired, so that you get a sense of the movement on them from year to year. So included in the memo, it does outline, again, increases, decreases, and then we do have a number of grants, primarily competitive grants that do expire after the amount of time that they're allotted for. Overall, the grant funding that we will receive in fiscal year 2026 is 2.3, or $2,324,865. That's about, you know, $88,610 less than what we received in FY25. And that's primarily due to some of the competitive grants drying up or expiring from FY25. In our budget book for FY26, you know, we knew a lot of this was coming. Our budget estimate for total grant funding for FY26 was $2,247,652. So we're slightly above what we budgeted for. We tend to budget a little bit more conservatively in case some things happen where we don't receive a grant. Something that is not shown here and is very similar to the conversation with Data that Ms. Clowder shared earlier, is that we're very early in the year and there are competitive grants that will come through. So, you know, much of this is around the entitlement grants, but we also do show the competitive grants on this spreadsheet. And as competitive grants become available over the course of the year, we're certainly ready to, you know, put together a grant application to apply for them, whatever that, you know, if that grant does serve or would serve our community. So I'm hoping over the course of this fiscal year, I'm coming back to you with new grants that I'm asking you to accept that would help kind of build our total grant funding for FY26. So with that, I'll, you know, take any questions that people may have. One thing I did want to share is when we're sitting back here in June, a lot of these federal grants, we weren't sure that we were going to get. So now that we're sitting here September, you know, the grant funding has come through, this is something that we're going to keep an eye on moving forward, right? There are things that, they're entitled, but we want to make sure that we're not, we understand that they're not guaranteed year-to-year or the way that we're receiving funding at the levels we have consistently received. We want to make sure that we're managing them closely. We're watching, you know, we're reading the tea leaves as to how funds are going to be allocated moving forward and be ready to respond as needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with the innovation career pathway, planning grant, so that expired. So mostly it's a planning grant, obviously. So we are past, past planning phase at this point?
That's correct, yes.
So is there any other grants that we can leverage to expand that program if needed?
We do have a grant application in right now through Karen Aries, who is our coordinator of career in technical education. So we're waiting to hear more on that. This was, you know, what I would consider to be kind of a startup grant to implement the programs from ground up, which is a lot around initial purchasing of materials to get the programs up and running, some training, those sorts of things. But we knew that was expiring and we did expense all funds in that category before it expired.
Will there be any other options to fund the ongoing coursework?
I think that's the grant that we've applied for is to support existing programs.
It's existing programs. It's not quite to the It's existing programs. It's not quite to the level of this amount, dollar amount. Uh, but it is, again, to support programs as they've been established and to keep advancing them.
Okay, thank you.
There, there could be a opportunity in the future if we wanted to expand and add more innovation pathways. We might be eligible for another similar planning grant for those new pathways. Um, you know, that's something I think we'd have to. Apply for something basically by the end of this year to be eligible for a grant in FY twenty-seven. Because we, we were not, and it wasn't part of our plan to expand it in this coming year. Uh, but if we wanted to do something the following year, we might look at that. Um, some of that will be running concurrently as we've made some determinations about the high school in space. Because that's one of the restrictions we have. If we were going to add additional pathway programming. We'd have to do it in the existing space that we have right now. And then, you know, there may be some that are amenable to that. We'll have to see. We have some that are, pathways that are on official state pathways. Though we might want to get that official state designation. Um, we're off to a really good start. I think that was in the, uh, earlier report on goals. I mean, we expanded a number of students by about a hundred and fifty or so. We're taking pathways programming. Um, I think that number will be even higher this year, is my understanding. Um, so, uh, that's something that we're, you know, paying a lot of attention to for sure.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Girardi. I appreciate the format, um, that you gave us the information in. And I also just want to acknowledge that these grants, it's work to, um. To apply for them, to track them, to comply with their reporting requirements and they, all the different accounting that has to go along with it. So I appreciate all the. The time and energy that goes into, uh, managing all of these. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I need a motion. I move that the committee accept all FY twenty-six grant funds noted in the enclosed chart and use such funds for their intended purpose.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And I think, uh, we just need to approve some minutes. Um, the minutes from the school committee workshops held on June tenth and August twentieth of twenty twenty-five. And the school committee meetings held on June eleventh and June twenty-fourth of twenty-five were enclosed. Um, in our materials, did anybody have any amendments or changes to those minutes? Yeah, okay, then they will be deemed accepted as distributed. Um, and I believe that's all we have on the agenda for this evening. Uh, thank you very much. Oh, I need to move to adjourn. I'm sorry, I'm out of practice. May I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you and good night.